Meeting is called to order. Is there a motion to approve electronic participation by a school board member?
Motion.
Second. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
Mr. Gilio?
Yes.
Mr. Andrews?
Yes.
Dr. Gupta?
Yes.
Mrs. Preston?
Yes.
Mr. DePaul?
Yes.
Mrs. Lauren?
But she should be here in a few minutes.
Yes.
Dr. Day, you're good to come, sir. Welcome. Pledge of allegiance, Colonel Tinsley?
Join me in the pledge of allegiance, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Colonel Tinsley. Is there a motion to approve public hearing and work session?
So moved.
Second.
Is there an amendment to the... did we do amendment here?
Yes.
We have to amend the agenda for...
Make a motion to amend the agenda.
Amend the agenda for the HR report which comes in has some changes. Is there a second to that motion? I cannot disclose right now what the changes will be announced. Madam Clerk, would you please call the motion to amend, to add the HR report, amended report to the agenda?
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
Mr. Gilio?
Yes.
Mr. Andrews?
Yes.
Dr. Day?
Yes.
Dr. Gupta?
Yes.
Mrs. Preston?
Yes.
Mr. DePaul?
Yes.
Dr. Tinsley?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Now, the main agenda with the amendments is on the table. Would you close, call the roll? The main agenda is on the approval now.
Okay, Mr. Connor?
Yes.
Mr. Gilio?
Yes.
Mr. Andrews?
Yes.
Dr. Day?
Yes.
Dr. Gupta?
Yes.
Mrs. Preston?
Yes.
Mr. DePaul?
Yes.
Dr. Tinsley?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Next one is the public hearing, repurposing TC Miller Elementary School for Innovation. Mr. Connor, full of public comments.
Several people for public comment. Eric Prosting. Eric Prosting. Remember. I need a copy of it.
Read the bottom of it.
Okay, here it is. Before you start, persons appearing before the school board will not be allowed to campaign for public office or promote private business ventures and should not use profanity or vulgar language or gestures, make comments about a public official or an employee that are not related to their official duties, engage in behavior that disrupts the meeting or intimidates others, or address the school board on issues that do not concern the services, policies, and/or responsibilities of the school board. Individual speakers shall limit their comments to three minutes. A speaker representing a group shall limit their comments to five minutes. The representative shall identify the group at the beginning of their presentation. A group may have no more than one spokesperson. A total allotted time for public comments at school board meetings is thirty minutes. Public comments are reserved for the public to provide input. The board does not respond to comments, answer questions, or otherwise engage in discussion at this time.
Go ahead. Hello, my name is Dr. Eric Prosting, and I'm here to support TC Miller. TC Miller is a special place. It's a special place because of the people. It's a special place because of the mission as a school for innovation and Lynchburg's only elementary school for the performing arts. And anyone who went to see the musical this past weekend and saw the amazing job by the kids leading the way on the stage, handling the lights, costumes, props, all done in community at a level that you don't often see in many middle schools can attest to the fact that the results are really truly astounding. These opportunities to perform are unique to TC Miller. Kindergarten on building confidence in these kids, my own kids included, exposes them to different ways of learning that has benefited them tremendously. It has been connected in many different ways through activities into stream and other ways of learning maths and sciences, innovative ways with wonderful teachers and an outstanding principal. It's designed to be a place of learning that is perfectly connected with the structure in which it takes place, both small enough to care for its students and big enough to make an impact across the entire community in a way that's truly unique and prepares these kids for great things. As my youngest prepares for kindergarten next year, I, like many parents across the community, want TC Miller to continue to be a special place. Those here today, with so many others across the district, believe we should support our students by continuing to support Lynchburg's only elementary school for the performing arts. We should not take away something that works very well. And TC Miller has done just that since it was established as a school for innovation over thirty years ago. Both for those who are zoned and close to home, as was the case for our family, and for those who apply each year from across the district, this is a school that deserves to stay. This is a school for innovation that works and that we should be proud of. It should be given the resources it needs to thrive, remain a key pillar of our primary education in our city. We should be investing in our schools and building them up rather than threatening to shut them down year after year. TC Miller is one of the best elementary schools in our city for a reason. We should support it. We should be proud of it. It's a school for the students. It's good for them. It's good for our teachers. It's good for our community. And we ask that you please save our schools, support our schools for innovation, support what TC Miller has been for decades. A school for the performing arts that matters and helps our kids soar and do amazing things, proof of which was just shown this past weekend at a musical that dared us to dream and showed us that anything is possible. Thank you.
Next, we have Letitia Rodriguez. Beth Pollard.
Hi. My name is Beth Pollard. I have three children in Lynchburg City Schools. I have a second grader, a sixth grader, and an eighth grader. I have a student who went to Bedford Hills Elementary School, one who went halfway through Bedford Hills and then transferred to TC Miller. And my youngest has been at TC Miller from kindergarten, first and second this year. I am so impressed with TC Miller. What a wonderful program. I hope you all have had the time to go and check out the school. Since you've been talking about closing it down last year, I assume everyone has had a chance to go and tour the building, talk with the students, talk with the teachers, see what's different about that program, see how mentorship between older teachers, experienced teachers, and new teachers has created a seamless system and how the enriched education at the School of Innovation makes a difference in how kids learn and how they enjoy school. Student retention, students attendance, right? We want to keep that up. Teacher retention, we want to keep that up, right? Let's look at the models that are working. Let's look at the School of Innovation. Last year, I stood here, I asked you all to be thorough and thoughtful when making decisions that affect our community and our school system. Are you doing that? I'm asking because we're at the same exact position. I don't know if you all have reviewed the comments from the public over the last year when we all stood up here and made our speeches and talked to you about our concerns. I've already made them. I hope you have reviewed those comments from last year when we're approaching the same decision to be made. Have we looked at what the costs are for renovating a hundred-year-old building for a different purpose? What do you need to do to make a preschool? What changes need to be put in? How expensive will that be? More expensive than just maintaining the building for its continued purpose, I'm pretty sure. What will it cost to bus children, preschoolers, from across the district? Have we surveyed families to see how they feel about sending their preschoolers by bus outside of their zone? My kids went to preschool around the corner because I had a babysitter who, I didn't have to worry about them putting car seats in. They could, you know, just walk them. Something to consider. What are those costs going to be? What's the big picture? I also was told last year when we had these discussions that we would have our School of Innovation somewhere else. I knew that that wasn't true, that we weren't going to be able to pick up all the same kids and teachers and put them in another building. But are you just going to scrap the whole concept? We still have Darrington, and I do think we should continue to invest in Darrington. But another school for innovation, it would be great to see the program in all of the elementary schools. Please, again, I implore you, be thorough and thoughtful. Thank you. Please keep TC Miller.
Andrew Hamm. Andrew Hamm.
Hello, my name is Andrew Hamm. I went to TC Miller my entire time in elementary school. I would like it if you guys reconsidered repurposing TC Miller. I had a lot of fun and amazing memories when I was there. I also made many friends, almost all of which I'm still actively friends with, such as Samuel Boswell, Lucas Snyder, Kyle Davis, Malia Webb, Coleman Bradner, and my sister Alexis Hamm. I think TC Miller would be more influential to these kids than any other elementary school in the area. I think this for many reasons, one of which being TC Miller is the only elementary school in the district with an active theater program, which would help students decide if they like theater. It made me decide I love theater, and I'm still actively doing it in high school. They also have very sweet and nice teachers there that the kids will look up to and admire. I ask that if you decide to repurpose a school, that the school would be RS Payne. I have had many ex-Payne students talk about how bad it was there and how they wish they went to TC Miller. Plus, the students that actively go to Payne would already be really close to TC Miller, so people wouldn't have to relocate. I personally believe TC Miller is the best elementary school in the district, and I would love it if you guys reconsidered repurposing the school and instead chose one of the other schools in the area. Thank you for hearing me out.
Laura Hashem. Laura Hashem.
Hello, my name is Laura Hashen, and I am an LCS teacher, parent, and also PTO president. And I am deeply concerned regarding the proposed closure of TC Miller. While I understand the difficult decisions that come with managing resources and enrollment, I urge you to reconsider the long-term impact of closing this school. Adding ninety-plus new students to Bass Elementary without increasing staff or support services will place a tremendous strain on both students and teachers. It is also outplacing teachers at other schools who are being impacted, who have poured their time, money, and great effort into each student that enters their room. Loving them, caring for them, and making sure they are becoming the students that make LCS a proud place to be. Class sizes will grow significantly with inevitability reduces the... which inevitability reduces the individualized attention each child receives. More importantly, a sudden increase in enrollment often becomes a rise in behavioral challenges, not due to student fault but due to the natural difficulties of integrating large groups without the appropriate support structure in place. Without additional counselors, behavioral specialists, or aides, this shift will create a more reactive than proactive school climate, putting both student growth and teacher well-being at risk. I urge the board to either reconsider the closure of TC Miller or commit to providing substantial additional support, including increased behavioral support, special education staffing, and mental health resources to Bass Elementary. As educators and parents, our priority must always be to create environments where all students can learn and thrive. Consolidation without corresponding support runs counter to that mission. I respectfully ask that the board consider either maintaining the current school's operation or committing to a significant support increase at the receiving school to ensure a smooth transition for everyone involved. Yes, more teaching positions are being created, but equal support staff should be added as well to aid this change. Our students deserve learning environments that are supportive, structured, and safe. We cannot achieve that by stretching already limited resources even thinner. Thank you for your time.
Wayne Harris.
Thank you. My name is Wayne Harris, and I come to you as a concerned parent. I'm a product of Lynchburg City Schools. I have three kids that currently... with two of them that attend Lynchburg City Schools. One, I'm looking to get into pre-K. And the potential of moving pre-K to one school and having two kids in another school across the town where I have to then travel another fifteen, twenty minutes is a bit daunting and frustrating because this is the very first year we can actually have all three kids in the same school. That is very close to our house, by the way. Lynchburg City Schools has done well, I think, thus far. And it is a little bit concerning to put all pre-K members into one place, one community, one school, knowing that they probably thrive better in smaller groups, not a large, one singular place. I would urge everyone in here to please reconsider that idea of considering TC Miller as a pre-K-only school and still keep the three places that we have currently. Of RS Payne, Paul Monroe, and Paramount. Thank you.
Okay. No applause during public comments. It's Letitia Rodriguez here.
Good evening. My name is Letitia Rodriguez. I come to you as a concerned parent. To begin, I'd like to thank the few board members that attended the latest and hopefully not the last musical at TC Miller. I comfort before you doubtful on the legitimacy outlined in the latest proposal. The hesitation on April 1st in response to whether or not legal review was performed on the matter of zoning solidified my doubt. While I understand the need for difficult budget decisions, I believe that the proposal fails to address the distinct needs of children impacted by this change. In Phase 1 of 1, I wanted to sink in that if parents wanted their children to attend their zone schools, they would. Simply outlining that invited students return to their base schools is intentionally limiting a parent's option to choose. We are not openly invited to TC Miller. We applied, and some of us were waitlisted. If those parents wanted their children to attend their zone school, they would. In Phase 1 of 2, proposing that multi-story building to house developing preschool children is unfeasible according to the Virginia Department of Education's school building regulations. Pre-K students require easy and safe access to all aspects meant for their... or to all spaces meant for their use. And the building is not laid out for that presently. Redesigning will ultimately take away from the million dollars in savings that you guys are boasting. These challenges make the proposal unworkable. Additionally... I'm sorry, this has just been overwhelming for the last few weeks, and I know how overwhelming it has been for the last few years for the people who have already been here. But I just want to really drive it home and hope that you understand that this does not work for these students. And if we are looking for the future students, the future pre-K students, and saying that there's going to be growth, this space cannot handle additional growth the way it is laid out now. Moreover, the building's capacity cannot meet the growing demand of pre-K in Lynchburg. And housing the students together with the alternative and special education programs risks significant behavioral challenges, compromising the safety and the quality of early childhood education that LCS claims to provide. Our district should be planning for growth, not consolidation. I trust that you will make the decision that truly benefits the children of Lynchburg, keeping them at the center. Thank you.
The final speaker we have is Colleen Larkins, representing Save Our Schools.
Hello again. I don't know what you guys see when you see us standing here or these other parents standing here. I don't know if you see that people have got off work early, that people have made plans for people to babysit their children, that they have put dinner in the crock pot, that they have come from tennis matches and don't look their best, but you know, that's life. That we are here with a sacrifice. Every parent that stands at this podium has made a sacrifice to stand in front of you, one way or another. And I hope when you see them speak, you realize they represent far more than just one. They represent so many others who are still at work, who can't come to a five o'clock meeting, who don't have childcare. They represent those who are working two jobs, and coming to a school board meeting is literally impossible. Throughout the last couple of years, I've stood here so many times, you probably are really sick of seeing my face. But I hope that if you hear nothing else, that you hear this. Waiting for the other shoe to drop time and time again when you guys meet is exhausting. It's exhausting for the people who are sitting behind me. It's exhausting for the people who are watching. It's exhausting for the parents who don't know what happens in this room until someone tells them. There has to be a better process for deciding when schools will close. It coming out of one meeting and two weeks later being voted on without parents being talked to or the community being considered... It's irresponsible, for lack of a better term. I know, I know, the fight for funding. I'm in it with you. For the long haul, apparently. But I also know the fight that parents deal with each and every day just to function, just to get their children to school, just to succeed in this world that has so many demands on us. To always be wondering what happens in this room and wondering if, truthfully, tonight you're going to close another school on top of TC Miller because that's what happened last time? That just cannot be the way we continue. We've got to take a breath and figure out the future, really figure it out, so parents don't have to be left in the lurch. I've fought with some amazingly fierce mamas over the last two years. So fierce. They love their babies. We love our kids. But we also love Lynchburg, and we also love LCS, and we want what's best for everyone. So my ask for you tonight is take a breath. Take a breath and really consider what this is going to do and give parents more time when you make decisions. It's going to be May before we know it, and that's not enough time. Thank you.
I'm only going with the people that signed up.
I did sign up, sir.
What's your name? A point of order, you're not on the... you're not signed up for the meeting. Do you have her on your list?
I'll make a motion to allow her to speak.
Second.
Thank you, thank you so much. I do appreciate that very much.
Thank you.
No, what's her name?
Micah DeVries. I signed up a few weeks ago, originally for last week's, and then I changed it to this week. Okay, thank you for allowing me to speak. I appreciate that. Good evening. My name is Micah DeVries, and I'm here tonight actually speaking on behalf of the TC Miller PTO. I'm also a proud parent of two current TC Miller students, a fourth and fifth grader, and a rising kindergartner that's coming into LCS. Our entire school community, students, parents, teachers, and staff is heartbroken and deeply disheartened by the likely decision to close TC Miller at the end of the academic year. For the past eighteen months, we've endured an emotional roller coaster as our school has repeatedly faced the threat of closure. When the vote to close TC Miller was rescinded in August, we felt a wave of hope. The hope was kept alive when we recently... as recent as February, just two months ago, LCS families received the invitation to apply for the Schools of Innovation, including TC Miller. My own family applied for our rising kindergartner to attend TCM, along with many other families. TCM had a strong number of applications for the upcoming year, which speaks volumes about the desires within the community to be a part of what TC Miller offers. Now, with only two months left of the academic year, families are left scrambling with few, if any, viable options for our children. Private schools are at capacity. The deadline for other Schools of Innovation have passed. And for many of us, returning to our zoned school isn't an appropriate or an effective solution. There is a reason so many families have chosen TC Miller. For some, it's because their child's needs weren't being met in their zoned school. And for others, it's because of the one-of-a-kind performing arts and stream program that TC Miller offers, programming not available at any other elementary school within LCS. We have incredibly talented and dedicated staff. Our performing arts director over here and our art teacher, Angie Coleman and McCree Workman in particular, have created something truly special. The level of performance our students achieve rivals that of middle and high school productions, and it's giving young students opportunities they wouldn't have anywhere else in the district. To the few board members who supported our students and attended Suzical Jr., thank you for witnessing the impact of this program. While some on the board might see the arts as just an extracurricular activity, I can tell you that the confidence, creativity, and communication skills our students develop will serve them in countless ways, whether it is in the arts or in careers like journalism, public relations, teaching, and beyond. Last week, while assisting with our production of Suzical Jr., I was amazed to witness third, fourth, and fifth graders operating professional lighting and sound equipment, hitting cues with precision and accuracy. That's the kind of skill, responsibility, and leadership this program fosters, and it will enrich these students for the rest of their lives. Letting this program simply disappear would be a profound loss, not just for TCM families, but for the entire LCS community. While it was briefly mentioned last week that the Performing Arts Program could be relocated to another building, the idea is not included... the idea is not included anywhere in this current proposal. Additionally, the proposal fails to address the important consideration that all students, current students within LCS, should have the opportunity to apply and attend a school that offers such a unique program. There are also significant concerns about moving this program to a school like Bass Elementary, given that the year-round schedule is not a great fit for most LCS families, and would certainly not be ideal for those of us who also have students in middle and/or high school, operating on a completely different academic calendar. I've heard a lot about declining enrollment as I've sat through these many board meetings. The truth is, TC Miller did lose some students and staff last year after everything that we went through. But most of those students left LCS entirely and went to private school. It seems the board does not understand that in order to keep your students, you must keep what is working well within LCS. The current students at TC Miller, and all the students in the district who would benefit from the unique offerings of a school like TCM, need to have a better plan in place for them. This isn't something to just figure out down the line. I ask that you not only consider the numbers, but also the lives being impacted by this decision. Please protect what makes TC Miller truly exceptional. Our children deserve nothing less. Thank you for your time.
Madam Clerk, do you have any voicemails?
One voicemail.
Hello, my name is Nettie Webb, and I am making a public comment for the budget meeting tonight on April first. Starting off again, my name is Nettie Webb, and LCS, specifically TC Miller, hold a core piece of my heart. I've been connected to LCS and concerned about its well-being for the entirety of my life, the little sibling, student, daughter of a teacher who has taught at TC Miller for twenty years, volunteer, and a long-term kindergarten and special education teacher at the school myself. Today, I'm speaking on the budgetary concerns related to the proposed consolidation of TC Miller, specifically the transition from an elementary school to hybrid pre-K and alternative program. Before I go into my comments, please refer to the report, Review of LCS 2025-2026 Consolidation and Long-Term Strategic Fiscal Planning that was sent to your emails this evening, which includes the data, methodology, and analysis, along with references and explanations of all the information discussing this budgetary concern, along with the other budgetary concerns from the consolidation plan, and considerations for the future of the goals from Governor Youngkin and others to improve achievement and reduce achievement gaps in the state of Virginia. Now, I know TC Miller like it's the back of my hand. Not just the community, but really the building. I can tell you how to get to the attic, or under the stage, or which rooms have the best temperature control. Which means, when I saw the consolidation plan, I knew it was not financially responsible because of the commendations and renovations necessary to host the listed programs in TC Miller. You really have to be in a building to see how it operates, flows, when not empty, with students there during the day, but also with families there on back-to-school night, on parent-teacher conferences, on open house, so that you can understand how it flows and the difficulties of the facility itself. If you walk into TC Miller on back-to-school night, you would see that our three-to-four-year-old siblings are tripping up the steps, that they're being carried, that they cannot get to the second floor, to the basement, that the stairs are too slick, and that it's not safe for those issues. Well, if you're adding ten pre-K classes to TC Miller, students have to go to the second floor. That means that they're climbing multiple flights of stairs. Students would-
Do you have any other voicemails?
No more, no more voicemails.
Thank you, Mr. Connor. Is there a motion to close the public hearing?
Motion.
Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
Mr. Gilio?
Yes.
Mr. Andrews?
Yes.
Dr. Day?
Yes.
Dr. Gupta?
Yes.
Mrs. Preston?
Yes.
Mr. DePaul?
Yes.
Mrs. Laurie?
Yes.
Dr. Tensley?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Next one is the consent agenda, is there a motion to approve?
Motion.
Second.
Mr. Connor, Mrs. Laurie. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
Mr. Gilio?
Yes.
Mr. Andrews?
Yes.
Dr. Day?
Yes.
Dr. Gupta?
Yes.
Mrs. Preston?
Yes.
Mr. DePaul?
Yes.
Mrs. Laurie?
Yes.
Dr. Tensley?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Now, part of the consent agenda, we amended, there's an announcement, so I'll give the floor to Dr. Copeland.
Good evening, everyone, and I appreciate your approval for the consent agenda. The late addition on the consent agenda for the HR report was to accept Mr. Nelson Garner as the next Athletic Director for EC Glass High School. Mr. Garner will come to Lynchburg with nineteen years of experience in public education. Most recently, he serves as the Director of Athletics for the Union County Public School System, which is outside of Charlotte, North Carolina. He's served as an Athletic Director and Physical Education Teacher at the high school level, and middle school level, as well as a Movement Ed Teacher in elementary school. The EC Glass current Athletic Director will end her tenure at the end of this school year, and the search was completed in the recent weeks. I met with him, along with the Chief Human Resources Officer, and he literally just accepted the position this afternoon. That was the late change to the board meeting. So I wanted to make that public announcement for the benefit of the board and anybody that's watching, that Mr. Garner will start his job in July of this summer.
July first.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next one is the old business, elementary efficiency, is Mr. Connor as Chair of Finance and Dr. Copeland.
At last, a board meeting on April the first. The details were presented relative to the elementary efficiency plan. Thus, the reason we had the public hearing tonight. Finance and Facilities Committee meeting heard this in late March. So it comes to you tonight for a further discussion and possible action.
Any discussion on the presentation by Dr. Copeland on that proposal? I know there were four phases to that proposal, Phase One, Phase Two, Phase Three. First thing for us to look at it is, you know, we'll have a, I'm speaking finance, so forgive me, but we got a new superintendent coming in, there'll be new board members. Do we want to put all four phases on the table right now? Or do we want to move some phases out? So I'll leave it at your discretion, sir, whatever.
I would like to make a motion to, tonight, just to leave out Phases Two, Three, and Four, and leave that for the new superintendent and the new board members. And to finalize Phase One.
Is there a second to that motion?
Yes.
Go ahead. We'll do the discussion once a second. Dr. Connor?
Has it been seconded?
No, not yet. I'll second that motion.
I think she-
Yeah, it did say second.
Mrs. Laurie did the second, I apologize, I didn't see. So, the motion on the floor is to take out Phase Two, Three, and Four, that's what you're suggesting?
Yes.
And leave the Phase One, as it is, we are not voting on Phase One right now. We're just voting to amend the proposal from the Finance and Facilities, which was to consider all four phases. So this amendment is, technically doesn't require a second, but we're amending the proposal from Finance. So instead of four phases, we're limiting our discussion for future, for only Phase One. Dr. Day, I'm looking at you, sir, if you have anything to say, the discussion is on.
Well, I'm just reviewing the proposal itself to see whether those Phases Two, Three, and Four, how rigid are they? I'm just looking at it now as I speak. Yeah. I'm not sure.
Any other-
I have a question. Just a clarification, your motion is only to discuss Phase One, not Phase Two through Four. Is that-
What we're recommending is that Phases Two, Three, Four are left to be, when we get a new superintendent. We have some board members that are changing over in June, as well as we'll have a new superintendent in place. And we think since Two, Three, and Four are so far down the road, we'll give them an opportunity to come in and either validate it or give us a new strategic plan.
Yes, okay. So we have a strategic plan which is pending. We got superintendent, we'll have a brand-new board from July first, and we are putting the timelines for twenty-six, twenty-eight, you know, way out there. It will not be fair for the new superintendent, new board, for our recommendations to carry forward and not then be as part of the new strategic plan. So the motion right now is just to take out Two, Three, and Four from the recommendation of Finance Committee. Any, if there's any further discussion on that. Madam Clerk, would you please, go ahead, Dr. Day.
We might consider just changing the wording of Phase Two, Three, and Four to make it a recommendation rather than a mandate.
Are you making a substitute motion?
Yeah. Mr. Connor's motion, so that the wording in Phases Two, Three, and Four is changed so that those are recommendations for the future, not necessarily mandates. So, and Phase Two could say, "Consider elementary renovations," so forth. Phase Three could say, "Consider second elementary closure." Phase Four can say, "Consider converting Fort Hill," and so forth. That way, what we are, what has been contemplated in this multi-phase plan is at least communicated to the future board and superintendent, rather than just giving them a blank slate.
I think it's unnecessary to do that, in that we already have these in existence. We, these are considerations once we take them off.
I agree with you. There's no reason to, I'll vote against the motion, because to me, we can bring it back anytime we want to, it's just what the consideration will do.
Yes.
Any other discussion on that substitute motion? Madam Clerk, would you-
But it wasn't seconded, so it doesn't-
No, Mr. Andrews.
I second it, so it needs-
Mr. Andrews is seconding the motion.
It would have to fail before it goes to the back-
What do you think about it?
It's not your place to ask him that question. Mr. Andrews, what do you think? You are the second of the motion.
Yeah, I mean, I agree with him, I like the recommendation, yeah.
Mr. Gilio, your hand up. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Connor?
No.
Mr. Gilio?
No.
Mr. Andrews?
Yes.
Dr. Day?
Yes.
Dr. Gupta?
No.
Mrs. Preston?
Yes.
Mr. DePaul?
No.
Mrs. Laurie?
No.
Dr. Tensley?
Yes.
Five yeses.
The motion carries. Mohammed?
Four noes, I mean, one yeses.
Four yeses?
Substitute motion fails.
Substitute motion fails.
Yes.
All right, so we're back to the original motion? Any discussion on the original motion?
Please repeat the original motion.
Mr. Connor?
To, to, tonight, focus on Phase One, and not focus on Phases Two, Three, and Four. Phase One will be our primary focus for tonight.
So now the motion is just, the motion was to take out Phase Two, Three, and Four for any further discussion? Any further discussion, if there are any, will be limited only to Phase One. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
Mr. Gilio?
Yes.
Mr. Andrews?
Yes.
Dr. Day?
No.
Dr. Gupta?
Yes.
Mrs. Preston?
Yes.
Mr. DePaul?
Yes.
Mrs. Laurie?
Yes.
Dr. Tensley?
Yes.
Motion carries.
So we have Phase One as the recommendation from the Finance Committee now. Is there a motion for or against Phase One to move forward?
Make a motion to approve and go forward.
With the Phase One, is there a second to that?
Second.
Mrs. Laurie, discussion on Phase One going forward?
But, but, is it okay if I-
Yeah, we have to have a specific wording for Phase One.
Specific wording for Phase One. Make a motion to approve Phase One's recommendations, which include the following. To close TC Miller as a K through five school at the end of the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. Two, repurpose TC Miller to serve early childhood education beginning in the twenty-twenty-five, twenty-six school year. This repurposing includes, A, moving the pre-K classrooms currently at Paul Monroe, Perrymont, and RS Payne to TC Miller, ten classrooms. Relocating the early childhood special education services to TC Miller, and consolidating and relocating elementary alternative education services and programs to TC Miller. Three, change the attendance zones for students located in the following neighborhoods. Students located in the Birchwood neighborhood outlined in the recommendation will be reassigned from the Perrymont Elementary Attendance Zone to the Darrington Elementary Attendance Zone, beginning in the twenty-twenty-five, twenty-six school year. And students located in the Florida Avenue Winston Ridge neighborhood outlined in the recommendation will be reassigned from Heritage Elementary Attendance Zone to the William Bass Elementary Attendance Zone.
Would you take the amended language for your motion?
I will.
And, Mrs. Laurie, you're okay with seconding that amended?
Yes.
And let me give you the reason, since we're discussing, it's been cleared by our school board attorney to, it's, the purpose and the spirit is same as was from the Finance Committee, it's just details all the actions which were discussed and proposed in that Phase One. It has no additional elements in there, it just puts them in black and white. Any other discussion on this proposal?
I have some.
Dr. Tensley?
So we're, if we were to vote on this now, this would essentially move to close TC Miller and do all the things you just, okay. I'm gonna vote no tonight, and I'm gonna tell you why. It's not necessarily that I don't see the validity in the proposal. However, we just asked for a public hearing. And we have given the public ten minutes? Fifteen minutes of consideration on everything that they just said to us? That's what we call pro forma in the legal world. Which basically means, we didn't care what they said. That we're just gonna make a decision, we came in here with our minds made up, we're gonna make a decision. I, I, I just think that sends the completely wrong message to our community. I know we're under a time crunch, and I know we need to make decisions, and I'm not trying to kick a can down the road, but I'm also not trying to alienate the very people that we're trying to, that we say we're trying to support. And I do believe that the people on this board, to a person, want to do the right thing and want to support our community. I'm not trying to imply otherwise. But I think it's gonna send an opposing message if we take this vote right now. And so if we do take this vote right now, I'm gonna vote no, and that's why.
Mrs. Laurie?
I think what, well, I'm gonna say what I am hearing from other people in the community, okay? They love actually this idea, since it's come out. And also, but what I've said before is, period, change is a part of life, and it's not that they're not being considered. We all go through change, it's not gonna stop, ever. And these children will go from fifth and leave and go to another school, they'll leave from eighth and go to another school, they'll leave from high school and go on somewhere else. And children, if they're being taught by people, which we have in our system all over the place, that care about kids and love them, they will do fine wherever they go. And so, this has been done, and we went through all these conversations last year, it was not ten minutes. It was all year last year. So this is not, I know this is your first year, but I was here last year, and we have heard parents, and we have thought about it, and then- and we have heard parents, and we have thought about it, and then we, the city gave us money to keep schools open, so none would close, but now that door's closed. So, we've gotta be responsible and be good stewards of what we do have. And the programs that Dr. Copeland mentioned in our joint committee, they're gonna go forward. They're not gonna be left out. And I know me as a teacher, I will really push to make sure those programs are there, because they are important. My children did not go through TC Miller, but they went through, they went through Dunbar, and they went through Heritage, and they stayed in theater the whole time and did great, so.
Mr. Andrews?
So I would rebuttal that statement, because you just heard from people in a community that does not like the idea.
Yeah, that's, well, you're not gonna please everybody.
So when you say people in the community love this idea, the, the community is right there.
That's part of it.
And, speaking on pre-K, there are three pre-K teachers that I personally spoke with, two of them are from Paul Monroe that do not like this idea. Now, with that being said, at some point, we do have to ask the community, what's the solution, right? Because we can't save TC Miller, we can't save Sandusky, and still give teachers raises, right? Like it, we have to be able to come up with a solution to the issue, right? Whether that's partnering up with council, which we've been doing, and hearing your voices. But I agree wholeheartedly with Dr. Tinsley, is that we can't invite the public to come and say, "What do you guys want?", but then we say, "We appreciate that, we're gonna do what we wanna do anyway," right? So my vote will be no also, so, yeah.
Mr. DePaul?
I think it's fairly irresponsible for anyone to imply that we have just given the good people of this community ten mere minutes, and to say that this is the representation of the entire school district, based on everything that we have experienced and gone through, is, is, it's, it's just wrong. It's wrong to have even said that. We have been working on this for months. This is an unfortunate situation for some, it's gonna be good for others, and in the bottom line, the children are gonna do okay. In the long run, they're gonna do fine, because that's what children do. And it's just a point that, it just irks me that someone will say that they don't wanna kick the can down the road, but by avoiding this, this vote, they're kicking the can down the road.
Mr. Connor?
Yes, I'm, I'm gonna have to disagree with my distinguished colleagues, Mr. Andrews and Dr. Tinsley. The city gave us an extra year, one year, to make another decision. We sent them a proposal of what we needed financially, not just to give raises to the teacher, but to operate the school system in an efficient level. If we don't become efficient, we will never become effective. And if we aren't effective, we have situations, we have schools that aren't meeting SOL goals, we have schools that aren't achieving. We need to, instead of focusing on budget issues, we can focus some of our energies on helping these schools that need it to achieve. Part of this is to get some neighborhoods. These children are traveling not by invitation or by application, but they're traveling the longest, from the most difficult neighborhoods, have the longest rise. So part of this proposal is to look at some children that are being neglected as part of this proposal. And to get the pre-K teachers in one building and consolidate, that's efficient. Right now, we're going to four different locations, we'll consolidate the two. We'll be bringing some special education, some special needs, which will bring all of that support staff to the school. It's going to benefit us long-term. Kicking the can down the road is what we have been doing. What we're doing now is we need to make some hard decisions, and it's hard to make a decision, especially when everybody's sitting here looking at you and saying, "We don't agree with you." But sometimes, we have to make decisions when people don't agree with us. That's strong leadership. And right now, we need to make a strong, because the city has said, "We'll give you one year, do something, and this is the time we need to do something."
And I, I agree that the city has given us a period of time during which to make a decision. But I also believe that we can't make it appear that this was a rushed decision. For people to understand the thinking that took place in order for us to arrive at whatever conclusion it is that we arrive at, I think it's beneficial, because we need to hear it and believe it and see it and recognize that, yeah, they did think about this. They heard me when I said A, B, and C. They, they are concerned about our children, and who has to travel where, and, and that sort of thing, because it is every child by name and need. And, and as a, as a parent of, of students that graduated from Lynchburg City Schools, I would want to know that you thought about my kid, that you considered that he wanted to play tennis at Heritage or whatever it is that he wanted to do, so that you were making the right decision. And when, when it appears that we're making a rushed decision, and, and you have not heard us have these kinds of conversations, then it's gonna put us in a position of being criticized, looked at, as though we didn't care about their kids, and that's not true. I, I don't want you to think that we don't care about your children, but I also want you to know that we did think about what you said, that we did consider all of those things. Is everybody gonna get what they want? Absolutely not, but that's life. Everybody doesn't always get what they want, but I wanna know that you at least heard me. So I, I recognize your concern, that, that we need to make people understand that we heard you. I don't necessarily agree with every step, single step, but I heard you.
Dr. Day, you have something to say?
Yeah, I'd like to, but I have, I have great respect for the concerns that were aired tonight, and I think all the concerns I've heard tonight have been aired in the past as well. The concerns that were aired tonight are not new to us. We, we are, we are aware of the sensitivity of those issues. There has been a lot of thought put into this proposal, looking specifically at, you know, the number of seats available at different schools, how many students would move from one school to another, what the effects will be on transportation, on personnel allocations. It, it's not like this is a hasty decision. It's the result of months of planning and working out the details. We, as a board, have been wrestling with this issue for almost two years now. We have changed our minds on a couple of occasions. I think, well, I won't, I won't, I won't finish that sentence. I'm just making the point that we have been working on this for some time. I think this is a well-designed, carefully thought-out plan. I know it's gonna be disruptive to some of the families that are, currently have students attending TC Miller. I understand that, but I think as Mr. Connor has said, we, postponing this is painful too, because postponing this means we're gonna be taking resources away from other teachers, potentially from hiring new teachers, from improving the conditions at other schools, improving the employment opportunities of our current teachers, just to keep this facility open until sometime in the future we go around again and contemplate whether we need to close the school or not. It's better for us to make a well-informed decision, which I think this proposal represents, and move forward, rather than continuing to leave everyone in limbo, which refusing this proposal would do. So I think we need to approve this and move forward. We've, we've made a decision tonight to, to only focus on the first phase of this plan, leave the future phases to next year's board and the new superintendent, whoever that may be, when they come on board. There's a lot of future planning to go, or to be done ahead of us. A lot of momentous decisions to be made. But this proposal, in my mind, is, is rather mild. It's mostly reshuffling. I know it means that the program that TC Miller as an, as an elementary school would become something different. Those students will move. I understand that, I know that that's uncomfortable. There are some benefits to that, though. So, I'm in favor of this proposal. I fully recognize the discomfort that a lot of the parents and families feel, but I think it's the healthiest decision for the schools and, and in the overall best welfare of our students as a whole. So I'm going to vote in favor of this motion.
Any other discussion before I make my comment? So, go ahead, Mr. Jalil.
I'm going to read a article by U.S. News about TC Miller Elementary School for Innovation.
Could you give us the summary of it instead of the whole article?
Did you print it out, did you?
Did I say I was gonna?
You said you were going to read the article. Go ahead.
TC Miller for Innovation is a public school located in Lynchburg. I'll skip a couple of things. The school's minority student enrollment is sixty-five percent. The student population is made up of forty-four percent female, fifty-six percent male. The student enroll, the school enrolls ninety-nine percent economically disadvantaged students. TC Miller Elementary School of Innovation is ranked seven-hundred-and-seventy-eight out of one-thousand-thirty-seven in Virginia elementary schools. Schools are ranked on their performance on state-required tests, graduation, and how well they prepare their students for high school. You could read more from best school, best elementary schools. The ranking factors, how TC Elementary School of Innovation placed statewide out of one-thousand-thirty-seven schools. Reading proficiency, number nine-hundred-and-eleven out of one-thousand-thirty-seven. Math proficiency, number eight-hundred-and-twenty-four out of one-thousand-thirty-seven. Reading performance well below expectations and math performance somewhat below expectations. Talks about the enrollment by grade, pre-K, kindergarten, first grade, second, third, by gender, student diversity, numbers of the full-time teachers, the part-time teachers, those are certified, those are not, and the subject proficiency. So, this is public data, anyone can find it. And to have elementary schoolers reading proficient district, out of the different, district average, let me read this. This information relates to schools run by this students, by this school's state operation, operating agency. Many districts contain only one school. It says fifty-three percent elementary schoolers proficient in reading district average, and elementary schoolers proficient in math, thirty-four percent district average. So, with all those numbers, you've gotta look at what is LCS producing, and specifically, what is TC Miller producing? And I think that it's a good thing to consider that as we make a decision. So whether or not the school is closed doesn't have everything we need to understand how to make the schools better in LCS. What we need to do is make a decision, and to look at these numbers, I would say there's a negative connotation. All things can be improved. We can take our time to improve them, we can make changes, we can adjust things and tweak things. But this is what exists right now. And so as we make this decision, let's consider what is and what we, what we hope it to be in LCS. Thank you.
Other comments?
I would just like to speak to what he said. We have good teachers in all of our schools, and those children will take their strengths where they go, and so will the teachers. You have to remember that, because we see transient kids. I've seen transient kids for thirty-one years I taught. And strong kids will be strong where they go, weak kids are weak, but we try to make them stronger. So, they're taking their talents with them, and that's a good thing, because they'll enrich wherever they go, and so will the teachers.
One more comment before you go, Mr. Chairman. One of the things that sold me on this was talking to Dr. Copeland in the Finance and Facilities meeting, and he talked about the need to start them acclimating to school life at an early age. And being able to consolidate our resources in one place to help these four, with three, four, and five-year-olds acclimate to the whole public school, will make them better first graders, second graders, third graders. I believe three, four years down the road, we will see an improvement in scores at every one of those levels, starting this next school year.
You know, I was thinking, if I, if my own elementary school was closed, and I go back and go look at it, I would be disappointed to see it closed. At least I experienced a lot of different things and enjoyed thoroughly. If the school was closed, what would I have wanted to, to see in the place of it? I would like to see a memorial. I would like to see it on the website. I would like to see some type of remembrance of the school that had a history, had my teachers and principals and all those different types of things. So, I'd just like the board to consider if the school is closed, if we close any schools, that we consider making a page of remembrance for the school, listing people, teachers, et cetera, maybe achievements, a little history of the school. And if you want, I can help put a few hundred dollars together and make a memorial. If you're gonna close the schools, you can have something on the actual property, just like they do have a memorial plaque in various different schools for different occasions. I think that that would be appropriate.
Thank you. Can I, Dr. Tinsley?
I'll defer right now to Mr. Andrews.
I just wanna probably just thank Dr. Copeland and Dr. Waterka and the staff for all the work that he's done. I mean, when he came to Finance and Facilities Committee meeting, I was sold on it too. I mean, I still am sold on it, I just think the timing is not the best, right? I agree with Dr. Tinsley. I mean, it's not like we're kicking the can down the road, but I really do believe that we should have
Camera has a magic.
More stick, yeah. More stakeholders input, that sort of stuff. And I don't, I don't disagree with Mr. Connors or anybody else that has made comments. And yes, these, these, we have created, been creating plans since I've been on the board, since I came, right? So I just wanted to at least acknowledge the people that have been working behind the scenes, like Dr. Copeland and Dr. Waterka, putting in the hard work to make sure that we did have some plan to present, right? I think just the timing is not the best, right? But that's just my opinion, so.
Yeah, and I guess the spirit of what you're saying is, was what I wanted to say is, I don't see this as kicking a can down the road. And I don't necessarily disagree with the plan. But everything in life has a rhythm. Your body has a rhythm, organizations have a rhythm, and decisions like this have a rhythm. I see four cameras around this room right now. And what's presumably gonna happen tonight is that this discussion and some of the comments of the public are gonna be taken to the media. It's gonna be broadcast, and over the next three or four days, the community is going to interact with what happened in this room tonight. And some people are gonna get angry, or gonna be happy, who knows how the emotions are gonna go, but then Facebook's gonna light up, social media's gonna light up. People are gonna say the things they wanna say, they're gonna talk in their communities about all of this. And that rhythm needs to happen before we vote. That is all I'm saying, that that rhythm needs to happen. And if we vote on this tonight and we pass this before the media or anyone else can have a say and, and, and report this and talk about this and discuss this in a public forum, the decision has been made.
And I agree with you, and I think that's what I was trying to say. We, as a city, need to digest this information so that it doesn't feel like it's just a rushed decision. Because some of these bits and pieces, while we may be aware of what the steps are in this process, the city doesn't know that. They just know school's gonna close and that, you know, they're gonna move and they're gonna move and so forth, but they don't, they don't hear the digest.
Give me, I want one more.
Dr. Day, can I say something to come back with? Go ahead, sir, because I cannot see you in the back.
I want to point out, there have been more than one newspaper articles describing the details of this proposal. So it has been in the news, there's been discussions on it on the radio, and the Joint Committee of the School joint committee of the school board and city council has also, uh, recommended that the school board adopt this proposal. It's not news. It's been out in the public for weeks now. So I, I fail to see what's going to be different if we wait until the next meeting, unless somebody can tell me there's a new source of information coming. I don't think the statement that this is brand-new and people need more time to digest it, uh, that does not seem convincing to me, because I've read the articles in the newspapers weeks ago.
Let me, uh, let me say my piece.
Okay.
Uh, this proposal came to finance committee meeting, and those, you pointed cameras, who is on the finance committee, Mr. Connor?
Um, Dr. Tinsley and
Mr. Andrews. You were not there that day. I heard you, I was there. You said it's a great proposal.
I still think it's a good proposal.
And so cameras have a magic. Cameras have their magic moment where we turn around and say, "Oh, I got to listen to these people." Same thing happened when we had these proposals before. When we brought this proposal before, Dr. Tinsley, you were not on board. Dr. Day made a proposal to close their TC Miller and Deerington. There were two school board members, and one is still on the board right now. They said, "I'm going to go if you go with the regular scenarios," which was scenario one, two, and three, and four. We brought scenario three to the board, and those board members still flipped. So changes happen, I understand, that's part of life. But the thing is, uh, Dr. Tinsley, this is your first year on school board, this proposal has been on the table for almost two years now. That is a fact. Uh, it has been vetted in several public comments prior to this. But I understand their pain, I've gone through different closures. My daughter used, went to Kaiser when it was shut down, so I've gone through, I, I can feel the pain, I've gone through that. But to say that this board is rushing to the decision, sitting in this chair, I cannot say that's a fair statement to make, because being in this place for two years and going through these different scenarios where people say, "Give me this and I'm, I'm for this," you know, "Give me this and I'm for that." So we've gone through different permutation combinations, but you're, you're a hundred percent right. Camera has a magical movement. Cameras make people change their mind and speak for collapse, and that's what several people do. And, uh, I'm not for that, for that. To me, it's not a fair statement for this board to say, "You just heard it tonight." Where were you for the last two years? You know, this, this has been there on the table, on and off, on, I understand flip-flops, on and off, on and off, but it's not like a brand-new, uh, proposal. And I was in the finance committee meeting when it was discussed, and I heard not a single, not a single dissenting comment, not a single dissenting comment. I, I went there with, not sure whether, uh, I, I am ex, as a ex-official member, I had a vote on the finance committee. Dr. Day was replacing you that day on the finance committee. For the newspaper, you talk about, that's the facts they need to know. So there was not a single dissenting word said. Correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Connor.
You're right, sir.
About, not phase one, phase two, three, four, all three phases. It was just move forward, excellent plan, wonderful, because there were no cameras. Right? To me, that's the only difference between now and that day, because there was not, if there were concerns, it was an hour and a half-long meeting, right, Mr. Connor? It was hour and a half-long meeting, and there was no discussion, no, not a single dissenting opinion, not a vote, opinion from present board members in that meeting. You know, so, and those board members have heard dissenting opinions from public, same parents, uh, prior to that meeting. So they knew what's happening in the phase one in that finance committee meeting. Did you hear anything dissenting if I, correct me if I'm wrong?
No, it was, we were all in agreement.
It came as a unanimous vote recommendation from the finance committee to the full board, unanimous. Not a single dissenting vote in the finance committee. The problem is, the finance committee meeting is not telecast, it's not live, it's not on camera.
It was.
No.
It was. These guys were at the finance committee. They were.
It's not in archives.
Were they at the finance committee, Mr. Connor?
I'm not, I, I know they were there, but I don't know if they recorded. I think they might have not worked.
This meeting is live, it's in archives.
But, Dr. Gupta?
Yeah.
I keep hearing, we say, "Close." My wife went to Armstrong. Armstrong closed. Kaiser closed, and it was repurposed as a regional special ed school.
Three years later.
We are, yeah, but it, we're looking at repurposing. We just shutting it down and, and boarding it up? We are, we are, we are saying, "Let's use the facility in a better, more efficient way to help us overall, and to focus on the youngest population, to develop them at an early age, so that when they get first, second, third grade, they are going." I, I, I see three years down the road, our first and second graders that come out, come through this program will be, will be astonished at their, um, abilities that they've developed because of the resources that will be put in place to assist them. That's my opinion.
Mr. Andrews?
We've had a discussion in the past about the difference between the school building and the school itself. There is a distinction there, and so I think when people think about the closing of the school itself, um, that's what I think we're talking about. Also, I liked what, uh, Dr. Tinsley said in the beginning, which was, uh, I perceived as the process. Uh, this administration, the, the, the school board, this, um, this season of the last two years, had some questionable processes, not necessarily illegal or against our policies, but questionable, and that's been discussed. And that's why I took it at, as a process. So if the definition, so I think that it's, it's, it's a correct idea, but I think the definition has to be clear. Is this an erred process by having this meeting and the public comments at this time and then making a decision at this, at the same time, instead of giving a few more days or weeks for another meeting and, um, more discussions and whatnot? I'm not quite sure what does change in the next few weeks if we do something different. We're either voting up or down today, and I, I just wanted to point that out, that there has been, what I perceive as questionable processes, and that's why I took it as. I'm not sure that, that applies.
Ready to call for a vote? Go ahead, last, last come.
Well, yeah, I, I would like, yeah, I just need to respond to that. Yeah, I, I think that's a fair approximation process. I think a lot of extrapolation of what I've said here tonight has happened. Uh, I think the, the root of what I'm saying is I, I, I believe pretty clear, but I'll try to clear, clarify it, and that is simply perception is reality, and if we move forward this revote, vote, I think it will be perceived by many in the public, maybe not all, that we rush to vote. That's all I'm saying. Not saying that, but you've stated three times, so I feel like I owe the public an explanation as to why I was not at the finance, at, meeting, and I went back and looked at my calendars to make sure. Uh, I do serve as United States Army Reserve Officer in the rank of Colonel. I do have a lot of responsibility there, and I was in Arlington, Texas during that week, serving my nation as a oh-six Colonel in the United States Army. I'm sorry I couldn't be here for this meeting, but I can be in one place.
Thank you for your service.
Maybe thank you for your service, we're not disputing that. Madam Clark, would you please call the role?
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
Mr. Jaleel?
Yes.
Mr. Andrews?
No.
Dr. Day?
Yes.
Dr. Gupta?
Yes.
Mrs. Preston?
No.
Mr. DePaul?
Yes.
Mrs. Laurie?
Yes.
Dr. Tinsley?
No.
Motion, first.
Thank you. Now, next one is the ad hoc superintendent search committee, Dr. Tinsley.
So, since our last meeting, which was just last week, um, we have, as a board, a joint board and, uh, ad hoc search committee, have gone through, uh, the candidates that we have to date, and, uh, we have ranked those candidates, and we'll be discussing, I believe, later tonight, um, those from the list that we want to interview. Again, I cannot disclose the names of any of our candidates for two reasons. Number one, the ethical reason, uh, that we maintain confidentiality, because many of these folks have current jobs that they don't necessarily want their current employers to know that they have applied for another position. And then, secondly, we are under a confidentiality agreement with our search firm on the behest of those candidates. I will say, uh, also, we have filed, uh, the Department of Education for an extension for our search committee, uh, once, according to Virginia Code Section twenty-two-point-one-dash-sixty, once a superintendent vacancy has occurred, you have one-hundred-and-eighty days from the time of that vacancy to, to, uh, name the next superintendent of your public school system. Uh, that one-hundred-and-eighty days ends for us April sixteenth. We will not have that person named by that date, so we have requested an extension. The good thing about these extensions is they are pretty pro forma, they are pretty automatic. Code section says, once a request is submitted, it shall be approved, so we, we expect that to be approved, um, giving us an additional one-hundred-and-eighty days, which we won't take that long, but, uh, if we had to, we could, so.
The letter will be signed, just for the public, uh, by the end of this meeting. So we had twenty-seven candidates. We shortlisted six for, uh, video interviews, as Dr. Tinsley quoted out last time, and we'll be going in a closed session to look at the outcomes of that. Uh, so, let me make a, the school board chair recommends school board approve a motion to convene a closed meeting to discuss the following, as permitted by Virginia Code two-point-two-dash-three-one, three-seven-one-one-A-one, the discussion of assignment, appointment, promotion, performance, demotion, salary, discipline, or resignation of, uh, specific Lynchburg City School personnel. And there's a two, second part to the closed session, there are two components of closed sessions. Second one is pursuant to Virginia Code two-point-two-dash-three-seven-one-one-A-one, a personal matter involving the discussion, consideration or interview of prospective candidates for the superintendent position. The way, uh, before you vote, we'll do is, we'll do the, uh, superintendent discussion first, so we have mem, members of the search committee here, so we won't hold you, and once we done with that, then we'll move on to the second part of the closed session. There's a motion to go into closed session.
Motion.
Mr. DePaul, Mr. Andrews. Madam Clark, would you please call the role?
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
Mr. Jaleel?
Yes.
Mr. Andrews?
Yes.
Dr. Day?
Yes.
Dr. Gupta?
Yes.
Mrs. Preston?
Yes.
Mr. DePaul?
Yes.
Mrs. Laurie?
Yes.
Dr. Tinsley?
Yes.
Alright, so we go into closed session upstairs, uh, Ms. Larkins, I can, Ms. Larkin, I see you there.
Dana McKinnon.